The March 9, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
May I quote?
Most gracious heaven, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can assemble ourselves tonight for our March 9 Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. As we review the cases being presented tonight, it will help us to reach a decision to be beneficial to the community and the parties requesting. We ask these things of your precious name. Amen.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The following are the procedures that will be observed for this meeting. These are the guidelines for speakers. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. For quasi-judicial hearings, any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any variance or special use permit case being heard by the Planning Board must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Please remember that is expected that many will wish to speak about these cases. Once speakers begin, if you agree with an argument already presented in favor or against, please practice the courtesy of indicating with a show of hands or a short statement of support rather than presenting the same argument again. Groups are also encouraged to send a representative to speak on their behalf. This will allow more citizens the opportunity to be heard. These are the case hearing guidelines. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, we're going to ask staff to present our first case, 2020-007.
Rezoning Case 2020-07 is a request for a two, just over two and a half acre parcel very close to the ETJ of Reevesville, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction of the City of Reevesville. This is a request to rezone from office institutional to conditional use neighborhood commercial based on a range of uses that the property owner would like to be able to use the property for. This is a currently developed property that's been used for a variety of uses in the past and is now changing hands, and the buyer intends to use it for those uses that are allowed in neighborhood commercial. This case is located in the rural land class, very, very close to the urban transition land class, which is why there's a description of both in your staff report, just to kind of give you an idea of how close it is to the fringes of the city and other like-zone properties in that area. The purpose of the rural land class is to show, provide for farm and forest management and other low-intensity uses, including residences, where urban services are not required. The characteristics, however, are lands with high potential for agriculture, forestry, and commercial uses associated with natural resources, agribusiness, or agritourism. It's important to note that land, existing land uses around this property are more characteristic of the urban transitional land class. The description of the urban transition land class is to provide for future, more intensive urban and economic development for lands that don't have, do not yet have usual urban services but will be accommodating larger populations in the future. Services are typically municipal or public services, and the residential density, which doesn't apply here, is listed as moderate to high. The properties, it's two properties located on the south side of Highway 158. This gives you a perspective, aerial view of what the properties look like. And a list of conditions that's easier read from your packet of those uses that the applicant wishes to omit from what will be permitted. I will leave the slide here for now and see if you have questions.
Can you go back to the photo? Yeah. Can you tell me what the, there seem to be two businesses or the two properties with the parking lots. Do you know what those are?
One is a church, and is this, this is the Dollar General is further down the road. This is the Dollar General, yeah. Fire station is across the street. This property used to be used, was at one time used for a church, excuse me. There's a fire station and Dollar General across the street.
So is that Thompsonville Road Fire Department?
I don't know. Emily, do you know which? Yanceyville?
Yanceyville, got it. Yanceyville Road, got it. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, I think we'll have the applicant.
And I'll be, I'll be available for questions, more questions later.
Thank you. Is Mr. Seguin here? For the record, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir, it's Stephen Segwin, 1802 Dr. Reed Road, Reevesville, North Carolina.
And what is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know about your application?
We're gonna turn it into ice cream stand. We're gonna serve soft serve ice cream, hard ice cream, sugar-free ice cream, coffee, tea, some bakery goods.
And will the business take up both of these parcels? Are there any questions for Mr. Segwin from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Will this, will this structure be like a permanent structure or like a lot of times you see the ice cream trucks on wheels?
There's already a building there, sir. We're just gonna use the building that's already there.
Okay, good.
I will say that the property owner has permission to, to use a mobile food truck if he would like to. I mean, that would be, that would be allowed as an option.
We may put our truck up if we're waiting, if we're waiting for the equipment to come in after everything gets approved. We may sell for a couple of weekends out of the truck, but it'll only be till all the equipment gets in and the property gets brought up to speed.
Got you.
Thank you.
Can you describe the?
How about that?
Can you describe the front elevation? It's not really clear from the photograph here. What will the building look like? Will there be parking there? What kind of surface is there?
Yes, ma'am, there's a parking lot already there. I think there was 14 spots.
Okay. We'll have to approve a site plan for the, for the, as a change of use, so that will come after the zoning.
They, it's a center block building, but they have a brick face on the front.
Okay, so it's, it's center block, but it's brick-faced.
Yes, ma'am.
How old is the building?
I think it was 1966.
Any further questions by board members? In that case, do I hear a motion?
Do you, do you want to hear from other members of the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't, there's, no one else has signed up for this case.
Just maybe ensure that no one has come that hasn't signed up. If you close the public hearing, then Mr. Segwin can sit down.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion by the board about this case?
I'll add that it was staff's recommendation that he, he's purchasing both properties. It was our recommendation that he zone the entirety of it just for, to have flexibility.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adopt the approved Case 2020-07, and the board hereby adopts the following statements required by NCGS 153A-341. The board has determined that the zoning amendment is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. As a whole, this zoning amendment supports the intent and description of the rural land class. The area is appropriate for the proposed land use, and the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with all of the maps and plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. The application is approved unanimously.
The Commissioners will hear this on the 20th. The Commissioners will hear this rezoning case on their, at their meeting on April 20th
The next case we're going to hear is a quasi-judicial case, which means that anyone who's signed up to speak has to come forward and be sworn in. If you signed up to speak, please come forward. Please place your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, please be seated. At this time, staff will present special use permit case number 2020-003.
Large-scale solar farms require a special use permit in Rockingham County according to the quasi-judicial process that you're aware of. This is a request for a large-scale solar energy system to the east of Reevesville, south, in the southeast part of the county. Includes 29 parcels totaling about 570 acres. It's located near NC 87, Chitty Store Road, and High Rock Road. The property is located within the rural transition land class. We, we haven't been in the habit of laying out parts of the land use plan as they pertain to special use permits. I do plan to do that in the future. This is a plan of the, the extent of the solar farm. Not every square inch of this area will be covered with panels. This is the extent of the permit that will allow them to develop with panels within it. And again, this is another case where staff will have to approve a site plan for the specific location of roadways, easements, and panels upon the special use, special use permit request. And according to the site plan that they have submitted, which is, at this time, a an extent over which the land will be developed. You have in your packet, and it's difficult to see these, to see them here, sections of the developed area, a variety of pages. I don't know how well they came out, but I've given you several sections that show how the area will be developed, and they've indicated the areas that are going to be leased from property owners and where the access points will be. So this, this photograph represents their site plan to be approved with a special use This staff report has a large error. I wrote you a staff report with a section from paragraph five, "Staff Findings." It means to say that based on staff's analysis and the UDO requirements for a special use permit to operate a solar energy system large-scale, staff recommends approval of Case 2020-03 with the following, with the conditions that the site plan is approved and that the standards of the special use permit are followed. Yeah, and of course, applicant's responsible for obtaining any necessary building permits. The, I will say that our attorney has had discussions with the property applicant about an additional condition to do with bonding, the removal of the expired panels at the end of their life, a decommissioning bond. And I'll let John explain that a little bit.
Yes, just briefly, we have come to an agreement as a condition, for the condition to be met, to obtain the special use permit and also the, prior to the issuance of building permits, that the applicant shall be required to provide a decommissioning bond. I believe that the, the applicant has also wanted to tweak the verbiage just, just a little. That still may be a work in process, but I think the overall requirement, we're on the same page. So the applicant shall be required to provide a decommissioning bond or equivalent security approved by the county prior to the issuance of building permits. I am fine with, with the general tone of this language, but the main thing the board needs to know is that that requirement, that condition will be present in the order.
And it's, it's not unheard of, you can make, if you decide to accept the, first, the applicant, of course, has to accept the condition. If you decide also to accept it, you can say, excuse me, subject to the, the details of which to be worked out and approved by the county attorney.
Okay.
Beyond what he, what he, John stated. I will say the applicant's been very easy to work with, very forthcoming about any, any information that we needed to satisfy the requirements of the special use permit. They've been doing this for a very long time. They can explain better than I the intent of the system and, and what it will do once Just a reminder, as your, as your staff report and your conclusion, your recommended motion, the approval process needs to find that each of the findings is satisfied, each of the four findings that are in the end of your staff report and in the Planning Board
And in addition to those four requirements in the approval process, we're going to add subject to, to decommissioning bond and whatever else the parties agree to.
Correct.
All right. Does anyone on the board have a question for staff regarding this application? If not, then I guess we'll hear from the applicant. For the record, sir, please state your name and address.
Yep, good evening. My name is Chris Killenberg. I'm here from Community Energy, 151 East Rosemary Street in Chapel Hill. Community Energy is the developer of the project. Williamsburg Solar LLC is a project company we've created to hold the assets of the project. So we are 100% owner of Williamsburg Solar LLC. As described, this is a large-scale solar farm. The purpose is to generate electricity that we will sell to Duke Energy, connecting to the transmission lines that run right through that area across Highway 87. We've selected a site that we met our criteria for, for land qualities, but also we felt was largely remote and able to be kept buffered from neighboring residences. And we've tried to be thoughtful and proactive about the way we design the system and where we're gonna position it to try to keep it as out of sight and as distant from adjacent properties as possible. But we do feel that the application meets the requirements of the ordinance in intent and letter, and just to echo something that Kerry said, we've, we've so far worked very well with the county and been very pleased with our interactions with the county as well. In regard to the decommissioning bond, we have a, in our lease, an obligation to our landowners to have a mechanism for the system to be removed and for funds to be placed with a third party so that they can remove it if something happens to us as a company. The same sort of sentiment exists in the county ordinance, so we're, we're very happy to add as a condition to the application that we will meet the decommissioning bonding requirement that we've discussed with the county. And the tweak that we, that was mentioned before is only just to give us a variety of methods for securing the decommissioning, cash, bond, insurance policy, et cetera. Otherwise, everything else about that decommissioning language was, was fine and suitable to us. This project is currently in a competitive bid with Duke Energy, and we are hopeful and optimistic that we'll be selected. We would find that out in April. If we're selected and make it through the ultimate additional steps, construction for this project would probably start sometime in 2022. So in the meantime, we've already done a lot of environmental studies, surveys, and all the other things to get the project essentially shovel-ready. And in addition to the county's approval, we've also previously received approval from the state and, but the, the big missing piece beyond the county's approval would be being selected by Duke as a, in this competitive bid, but we feel reasonably confident we will be. So with that, let me stop and see if you have any particular questions about the application.
I do. Hold on just a second. So according to the report, there's, the properties are not contiguous, but about 500 acres?
Yes, the, the leased area, the area we have under leased, I believe, is about 570 acres in total. And of that, probably 375 would be actual solar panels, but there are topography that we have to avoid, and there are some wetlands and creeks that we will be avoiding. We're not gonna be encroaching on any wetlands or any other natural features like that. So this part of the state has got a little bit of contour to it, and that's sort of the nature of the beast. It's gonna be a little bit of a, a patchwork.
So about 75 to 80% of the, of the acreage will be covered in panels?
Something, yeah. I'd say, yeah. Probably 70s, pretty good number.
Got it. How tall are the panels?
Typically, no more than 10 feet tall. This system will be a fixed system, so it'll, it'll not be moving, all facing south, and the, the top edge, the back top edge of the panels is generally less than eight, than 10 feet, but I would say safely 10 feet tall. It's maximum height.
Okay. And on our site plans or our, our renderings here, it mentions fencing. What type of fencing? How tall is the fence? Will it have a privacy piece to it? Can you explain, can you describe that a little bit?
So typically, it will be a six-foot chain, standard chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire at the top, and we would rely on the natural buffer or the additional buffers that we'll install as part of the ordinance for screening. We wouldn't typically add additional items to the fence itself.
So the panels would, say, be visible to possible neighbors or folks that are riding down the road?
They would be, except for the intent is to meet the ordinance's requirement for visual visual screening.
Okay.
So, we, in many parts of the site, we, there's ample natural existing vegetation that we will leave in place. And then those parts that we sort of peek out into the open, we are prepared to do the screening that's required by the county.
Okay. How many landowners will be leasing property to you?
So, I believe it's 29 parcels, but many of those, or numbers of those are held by multiple family members. So, 22, 22 individual landowners.
Okay. How long do the panels last?
Well, they'll last a long time. The kind of panels that we typically use are the kind of technology that's been around since the 70s. And part of the reason that we like that is we know how they're going to perform. And so, the panels that we'll install, after 30 years, will still produce about 75% of what they did day one. So, they're still functioning. Whether or not the project continues on thereafter will be up to the county and the landowners and the company. But they're not going to disintegrate over time or fall apart. They'll still be, you know, essentially what they looked like day one, just less productive.
Give us a sense of how will the, how will these solar panels benefit the immediate community, which is Williamsburg, the broader community in Rockingham County? And will it just benefit Rockingham County exclusively?
So, for the immediate community, certainly the landowners involved will have a benefit. Also, during construction, there'll be quite a lot of construction jobs. And so, that will involve casual purchases, gas, food, some lodging, I imagine, some hiring of local contractors to do some of the work. Some of the kinds of work are generally sourced locally. Long-term, there'll be a handful of full-time jobs. I wish it was a better long-term job creator, but it's a, it's a simple system that doesn't require a lot of that maintenance, keeping the grass mowed and, you know, the facility looking good. For the county, there'll be significant tax, taxes paid to the county without an offsetting expense to the county. So, we're not putting kids in school, and we're not requiring water or sewer, and hopefully not much sheriff. So, it'll be a net benefit to the county tax-wise. There will be broader benefits beyond Rockingham County in the sense that I'm sure that some of the construction hires will come from outside the county. But obviously, the taxes are going to be paid directly to the county. So, I don't know in the long-term how broad the effects are beyond Rockingham County. I will say that by state requirement, we, our bid to sell the power to Duke Energy, it has to be below their avoided cost, below the cost they would otherwise incur to produce the same electricity. And in actual fact, our bid is below that level too. That's part of the competitive bid process. So, for any ratepayers of Duke Energy or the co-ops that they serve, this is not expensive electricity. It's cheaper electricity than Duke is now producing. So, there would be a broad benefit in that sense, but at least not a, I think the days of solar energy being more expensive than traditional energy are behind us, and these days, it's less expensive.
Do you have a projection of how many kilowatt-hours these panels will produce, say, in a year?
155,000. Sorry, that's megawatt-hours, not kilowatt-hours. So, multiply that, 155 million kilowatt-hours, there you go. So, it'll be, be the rough equivalent of 15,000 households' annual consumption. Think of it that way.
And I just have a couple more questions. What makes Rockingham County, particularly Williamsburg, so attractive to your project?
So, two parts of it. One is Duke Power is, is looking for solar electricity in the western part of the state, we consider western part of the state. And in order to do a large-scale solar farm, you have to be on transmission infrastructure. So, the transmission lines running through there are good infrastructure. There's two lines there, and they're well-built, et cetera. So, it's just from a, from a grid perspective, that's a good place to connect. After that, we're looking for relatively flat, relatively dry land, and that's a tough thing in the western part of the state. So, what we found in the site was enough flat land adjacent to each, to each other to create a site that would be large enough to be cost-competitive. In other parts of the state where it's dead flat, we'd probably use less acreage, and it would all be contiguous, but that's just not possible in this part of the state. So, we were happy to find this particular topography. And I think too, since a lot of it is back in woodland, off the road, and away from neighbors, we have a chance to kind of insulate it from neighboring properties pretty well. And that's another thing we look for, is a site that even though it's big, can be, kind of be tucked away, so it's not, not really in your face. And that's, that's an important thing.
Are there other parts of the county that you're, that you're looking to do any, anything?
Not currently, no. And to be honest, we looked at lots of counties and just happened to find this particular stretch of land, and then landowners who wanted to participate, which obviously is an important part, too.
Okay, and one last question. How many other projects of this size have you, have you been involved in before? And how long have you been in business?
So, the company has been in business for 20 years. I've been with the company for eight years. I started doing smaller-sized projects, mostly in eastern North Carolina, in 10 and then 40-acre range. And I think there are 28 projects I developed in the eastern part of the state that are now in operation. I then was the lead developer on a 1,200-acre solar farm in Georgia that sells power to Georgia Power, on a 900-acre solar farm in South Carolina that's under construction right now that will sell to Dominion, South Carolina. And then we have in, in development, in, through my office, about a half dozen other projects of this size. The company has also done projects of this size in Colorado, Minnesota, two in Virginia, two in Utah, and we have other ones that are in development or close to construction. So, as a company, we've been around a long time for the renewable energy industry, which is not that old of an industry, and, and done quite a lot of projects in various places similar to this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, sir. I was looking at your, at your outline for your solar arrays. Looks like you're largely sticking to the agricultural land.
Yes.
That was there.
Yes.
And there'll be some additional clearing of some other places probably from where the map looks.
Yes.
Is your fencing going to be basically outlining the arrays and not a, not a continuous fence around most of the property?
Correct, yeah. The arrays will be sort of pods, if you will. And each will have its own fence, and the fence is drawn in, so it's about 20, 25 feet from the outside of the arrays.
Right, okay.
So, we'll have a fence, and then we may have, you know, 500 feet of woodland until you get to the next pod that could be somewhere else, so.
So, there wouldn't be any restriction for any of the wildlife in the area moving through there?
Right, in this, in this sense, that's a good thing, I guess, to have pods, because there'll be avenues between them that.
Right, because you've got a watershed running through there, and you know, there's, I'm sure there's some movement of, of, there's a lot of, you know, impact of things, you know, which you understand that, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that was my question. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? I have just one.
Yes, sir.
Besides any meetings you've had for negotiations or any other purposes with the lesors, have you reached out to the surrounding community as well?
We have, yes. We sent letters. We had originally been on an agenda to seek a special use permit about a year ago. We got snowed out, and then I forget what happened. And then, and then in that case, we weren't selected by Duke to continue. In that process, we had sent letters to each of the adjacent landowners throughout the entire site. We subsequently had some conversations with a number of them. And then, of course, in the, in both of the permitting processes, they got contacted as well. And we went through a state permitting process where they would have been contacted as well. So, I, yes, I feel like we've made a good effort to be sure that everybody's aware of what's going on and made ourselves available to them to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
David and Pamela Williams. For the record, please state your name and address, please.
I'm Pamela Williams, 516 County Line Road in Reedsville.
Yes, ma'am, and what would you like the planning board to know?
Our, our house is way back off the road, and the farm, the solar farm would be about 500 feet from my bedroom. And I just was concerned that the panels would be close to our property line, and I just wanted to, you know, I was not approached by anybody personally. I received a letter a couple of years ago, and then I got a card in the mail last week saying about, talking about this hearing. So, I'm just here because I'm not aware of all of the details of how close it would be to my house and just need more, need more information.
Would you like me to rise and respond?
You can address her comments as soon as we've heard from the other speakers. You could, maybe you could just make a note to address her. Mr. Kirkland?
I'm, I'm here in case there's any questions.
Oh, okay. Then we'll put you in the rebuttal section. Mr. Killenberg?
Oh, that's me again.
Oh, that's you. Mr. Amesbury?
Yeah, I'm here in support of Mr. Killenberg.
Okay. Are there any other speakers, either for or against, that haven't signed up?
I just heard from other people here that they also have not been notified except by the committee.
Okay. Well, Mr. Killenberg, if you'd come up and answer these questions.
So, in answer to Mrs. Williams' question, so the closest distance of the panels that we show on the site plan to the Williams' house is 440 feet. By ordinance, we're 100 feet off the property line with a buffer in between. I believe there it would be natural. So, just to answer, answer the question of, that was raised earlier. As for the landowner contact, I, I, you know, we, we had sent letters and were not contacted by people, so I don't know how to respond to.
I have a follow-up question. Mr. Killenberg, for those people, this is a pretty rural area, but for those people, particularly those that are on County Line Road, would you be willing to reach out to those residents and make sure they understand fully what things are going to look like? I know that I would be concerned if something like this was moving into my backyard. So, but I think certainly with information and education, that allays a lot of fears.
Yep.
Also, for those properties that are closest in proximity, say, houses, is there any plans to do any type of mitigation, buffers or screening so that the panels aren't as visible or, and do they make any noise? Those kinds of things that, that these homeowners, I'm sure, have questions about.
So, on the noise question, they, they do not. It's, it's a very quiet facility. The things that make noise are some machines that, transformers and machines that change the power from DC to AC that have cooling fans. Those stations are by design located in the middle of the array, a very long distance from any periphery. So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't hear the fans from 50 feet away, let alone 500 or 1,000 feet away. So, it's, it's a quiet facility. We are more than happy to explore additional augmentation to the visual buffers where necessary. We are, we intend to meet the requirement of the ordinance, but we're very happy to work with landowners and/or the county where there are specific areas that could use some enhanced distance or buffering. That's fine.
And if we made that part of the condition of, of approval, you'd be willing to work with this county to make sure that happens?
I would, yes. I would be happy to work with the county. I'd say the.
The way to do that would be through the approval of a site plan.
Okay.
Of a more detailed site plan that, that indicates the, the buffers and that, the way the ordinance reads is that the system is fully screened, sort of performance-based, so we'll have to do it as part of a, a planning process. And we'll, we'll, if we're out there on the site together with a plan saying this is where the buffer, this is where the buffer will be this, and this is where the buffer will be that.
Do we need to put that in any, would we need to put that in any particular language, or is this something that you would do automatically?
The second question, yeah. It was something that I would do automatically, too. I, I need more details to ensure that the, the ordinance is met. I would have to do that after the, should the permit be approved, then they can go to that next effort.
And you can go beyond the ordinance for those areas?
Not only if they, if they offer, but the ordinance is pretty clear, saying fully screened.
Okay.
Additional questions? Any other questions for Mr. Killenberg?
Mr. Chair, I was wondering if it'd be a little bit out of order, maybe since they mentioned that there was a lot of folks who got their cards who may not know that they could have signed up to speak, would it, would it be okay to let somebody else, maybe took a second to ask a question? It sounded like he's very willing to answer their questions, so I wondered if there's anybody else that would like to ask any question, if that's possible.
Ma'am, did you want to speak?
Actually, I'm representing Doris.
You're going to have to come forward, ma'am.
She'll, because of the process, you'll want her to be sworn in and present.
You'll also need to be sworn in.
And be presenting testimony as evidence.
First, wait, hold on. First, we're going to have to swear you in. So, put your left hand on one of the bibles there and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimonials you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, go to the podium and please state your name and address.
Ila Lee Waynek, 203 Lawsonville Avenue in Reedsville.
Okay, and what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
I was just representing Doris Hopper. She couldn't be here tonight. And it backs up to two parcels of their property, and they received these in the mail. They're, they're, they're an older couple. They'll be, both be 88 this year. And so, she asked me to come and find out about it, because the first notification she was made aware of were the cards that she received in the mail. And we wasn't sure how it was going to affect the farm property that David McKinney back here actually farms, and what it might do to the water quality and such as that, any type of runoff.
Okay.
And David may have some questions, because he would be the one that it would affect, because he rents that property that's in question.
Mr. Chair, may I ask the address of the location she's referring to? Is that on County Line as well?
No. Their property sits between Gillum Road and 87. And it comes within, both parcels come within 1,000 feet of their property lines, it said on these cards. This gentleman might be more able to point it out, and David may be more able to point it out. But it was just that no one was addressing the farmlands. They were only addressing the residential areas.
Okay. Your concern is noted, and we'll ask Mr. Killenberg to offer an explanation. But you mentioned this gentleman back here. What was his name?
Uh, David McKinney.
Uh, David McKinney.
Did you want to speak, sir? Ma'am, you can, you can sit down. You'll need to be sworn in, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, you have to place your hand on the bible, sir. Your, your left hand. There you go. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please stand in front of the podium and tell us your name and address.
My name is David McKinney. I live at 226 Trails End Road in Reedsville, North Carolina.
Okay, and I understand there's some farm property you're concerned about.
Yes. This is Herbert's. I don't know if you can see it, but it's this property right here.
I think he's pointing to here.
And, and he was just wondering how far it was coming up to his property and, you know, was it gonna be a buffer and, and all of that. But I've lived in the community of Winsburg my whole life, and it's gonna be a change. I don't like it. I'm against it, you know, and they send out letters 1,000 feet from my houses. Well, if you draw the map and you pull 1,000 feet from a lot of them houses, it ain't gonna be as much solar panels as you think. It's a lot of creeks, a lot of runoffs. I just, I don't think y'all are getting the true picture of how it's gonna affect the community.
Well, it's been stated that of the 570 acres, that they're asking to be rezoned, only 375 of those acres will have panels on them. So, the whole thing is not going to be covered with panels.
Yeah, I understand that, but this fellow over here, he's from Chapel Hill. He ain't gotta look at it every day, does he?
Well, there will be buffers, and I understand that, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, that the buffers also have to take into consideration things like glare from the panels and...
Yeah, the, the way the ordinance reads that the glare can't create a nuisance, has to be directed away or mitigated.
Yeah.
So, you farm this property, correct?
Yeah, I farm about, well, at one time, every piece of property that was on there, I was farming.
How many acres do you farm now?
Do I farm now? It's probably 400, 500 acres.
What do you farm?
Tobacco, grain, cows, you name it. You know, because one of them is family land, and then one of them's a cow pasture, and, you know, so it's gonna affect me more than it'll affect anybody here, of course. And, and, and the runoff and this water running off the solar panels, I mean, is it gonna, the drinking water, will it affect the drinking water, or does anybody know? Or the effects, the health effects, or anything like that?
Okay.
If you know, and the backside of the power lines, it's all trees. Well, if you wipe all them trees out, worse is gonna be the windbreak, you know, because a lot of farmland in that area, it's gonna be some bad storms also.
I have a question for staff. Are there solar panels there in that area already?
Yeah, to the, just to the west, you can see in the aerial photograph, there's a smaller farm that'd be close to...
Am I seeing two sets?
Yes. Of panels where you can see the power, you can see the power line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And see, that's gonna...
Right along the power line.
The solar panels are gonna run all the way up to the back of my father's farm, and it's another site for solar eyes.
What, how, what's your proximity to the existing solar panels? How close are you to the, to the existing solar panels?
From my farm?
Yeah.
Or where I live?
To whatever you do.
It's, well, I farm right beside them.
Have you had any problems with them up to this point?
No, ma'am, but I don't want, it is 15 acres. It's not 500.
All right. Have they, have, have the existing panels caused, caused you to change your business in any way?
Well, I've lost a couple of fields, probably five acres across the road to solar panels.
Oh, so, but you don't own those, own that property, you didn't, you didn't lose them. Did you own that property to begin with?
No, I was leasing the property.
Okay. Okay.
Well, how about we call Mr. Killenberg back up here, and maybe you can address your concerns?
Be great.
Thank you, sir.
So, first to the first person who spoke, the Hoopers, and, and Mr. McKinney was pointing it out, the far western edge of the solar farm that you see here, the next open field belongs to the Hoopers. We actually sent them a couple of letters, and Chris Amesbury, who's with me, spoke to them personally, which we can, he can come and attest to, because frankly, we were interested in whether they would lease us some of their land for the solar farm, and they, they chose not to. But that was part of our conversation with them. So, they, they were, are, are and have been well aware of the project through multiple communications. The property that Mr. McKinney mentioned abuts the Hoopers, but by ordinance, we are required to stay 100 feet off the property line, and that, that property where we would be putting the solar farm is wooded along that periphery. So, that'll be a wooded buffer of, you know, 100 feet also, so...
And is your intention to leave that buffer?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we proposed that as a natural...
So, you won't be cutting those trees down?
Not along that buffer line, correct, yeah. As for runoff, we're, we are required by the state to manage our runoff through construction, and afterwards, we have to file a storm water management program. We'll be planting grass underneath the arrays for the purpose of retaining the moisture or controlling it, because we don't want erosion any more than anybody else does. It doesn't serve our purposes either. And then any water that would go into streams, et cetera, will be regulated and governed by state requirements, which are intended to avoid siltation, et cetera. There is nothing inherently dangerous about the solar panels themselves, the materials we're using that would leach chemicals into the soil or groundwater. That's never been found anywhere in any solar farm that, you know, I'm aware of. But it's a legitimate concern, but that, that these are, are not chemical-based systems. There, it's equipment in a field. So, I can't speak to the wind issue. Again, this is gonna be a patchwork of, of solar arrays, so it's gonna be broken, you know, between the arrays by trees and, and other space, so that, that may or may not have an effect on wind. I would say that I, I, I care about the neighbors' concerns, yes, but also the participant, participating landowners here have been given a choice and an opportunity and made choices about participating or not in what they do with their land. So, as much as I am always sensitive to farmers who get displaced from farmland, it, it was the landowner that made the decision to do that, not me. I gave them a fair opportunity to, to participate, and some did and some didn't. And so, I, I understand Mr. McKinney's concern and the effect it would have on him, and I'm sensitive to that, but I, it was a decision that the landowner made, not, not me. Other questions?
Anyone? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board discussion.
I would just, I would just add that the approvals he's talking about will come across my desk, and those, those individual regulatory, the DEQ will be coordinating with me as they permit the stormwater runoff. And the, I meant the mention of watershed, there's very little, if any, built-upon area that would affect, that would create impermeable surface that would potentially damage runoff into the watershed. I want to point out and apologize a little bit, that the staff report, item number six, approval process, is the correct list of findings that, that you should use rather than our analysis sheet. You know, this is a little bit of, just to keep it simple and clear. So, that would replace two with six. I just, you can use, use six to make your motion, that six, A, B, C, and D, those are the four, your, your motion would find those four things to be, in fact, true.
But it would have to include number, number one, correct?
Just the, just the four...
Just, just the four.
Four findings for special use permit. Yep.
I understand.
We need this statement as well. Did you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit. The planning board approves the special use permit before the board and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 153A-341 and 153A-342. As for the approval process, no special use permit shall be granted by the planning board unless each of the following findings has been made concerning the proposed special use, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance, and with all other applicable regulations, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the use or development is public, is a public necessity, and that the use or development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied by this chapter and the Rockingham County Development Guide. There should be competent...
The rest doesn't need to necessarily be part of the motion, sorry, Julie.
If you would just add the special conditions that...
Including the special conditions outlined for...
Decommissioning.
The decommissioning of the panels, and any other legal agreements, according legal agreements.
Do your second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. The special use permit is granted. Where's my agenda? Do we have any old business to discuss? Any old business?
Uh, sorry, no. No, no old business, sorry.
Then how about some new business?
Yeah. The, uh... The Board of Commissioners...
Excuse me, this meeting is still in progress.
Thank you, Paul. The Board of Commissioners recently appointed three new planning board members to serve as alternates until they're comfortable to, to sit as regular members in the case of a, of an absence. And if the, some of you are in the back, come on up, so, come on up, so that this, the board can recognize your faces. Stacy Southern, I know Cory, Cory Scott, is he still here, Cory? And Dylan, is Dylan, Dylan Moore? I believe all three, you guys can, can sit. I just wanted you to come to where the board could see your faces. I guess Dylan isn't here. I think all three of you were in the Citizens Academy, isn't that right? Yeah. So, all, all three were students of the last Citizens Academy. Must have been so impressed by my presentation. Also have been involved...
It was the leadership.
That's what it is.
It was the hood. That's what it was.
And, and it's particularly good when citizens who have been engaged in the process in the past are, are, want to become part of the process moving forward. So, that's a, that's a really positive thing. We are going to put together a training, sort of a series of training meetings for you guys, and the item, the, the agenda item says discussion of planning board training. At this point, Paul and I got together and put together an outline. John, John and I have also spoken about, and the training will range from things like an overview of Robert's Rules to appropriate questions and, and comments and motions within a case. So, and my intent is to kind of bring up some role examples of good and bad ways to do things in, in a variety of cases. And so, part of it's gonna be to help initiate the new members about what we do, and part to remind you all, I think it's been a while since you had any formal training. Has it been a while since you had any kind of, I mean?
Yes.
I mean, yeah. So, it's all, it's all good. So, we're looking forward to that, and because of it, I'd like to hold that second meeting in April. Every other month, we have a, a penciled-in meeting, and if everyone is available, I'd like for us to meet on the 27th? I want to make sure I get that right. Yeah. So, in April, we'll meet on the, the 13th, which is Easter Monday, and the 27th. I don't think we have anything for the 13th agenda. Do we have anything for the 13th? We have, yeah, but those, the old zoning cases. Oh, okay, the, so, so...
hearings.
Board of, yeah, Board of Adjustment. Okay, so, that's the reason, that's the main reason to have a second meeting in a month. So, we'll have, we'll start our training in, on the 13th, and then depending on time, we'll continue it to the 27th.
So, you're talking about April 20, April 27?
Yeah. So, is there anything in particular that you want to make sure we cover in the training, besides what Paul and John and I might talk about?
As far as the Robert's Rules are concerned, I've been trying to trim them down to an easily understandable language. You know, the language in Robert's can be pretty cumbersome, but the book he gave me from the School of Government was a big help, and I'm kind of melding that in with the rules to offer a simplified version.
That's great. We're, we're really...
I'm about halfway through now.
Pretty lucky, actually, because Paul's gonna take that.
That must be good bedtime reading.
Maybe for you.
I took a whole course on that.
It's just the David Owens, Robert's Rules for smaller groups, for small groups, and of course, Paul, once he threw it, will, will let us review it. And it's, it is, it's a good, it's a good simplified version.
And I'm, I'm plucking certain things out of the comments that I think are truly pertinent, as far as explanation of why things are done a certain way, but they won't be formally written in as comments. I mean, it'll just be part of the instruction.
Okay, and then we will, we'll take that and turn what's necessary into bylaws and/or ordinance, if there, if it represents any changes to those things.
My, my guide is the book called Plain English for Lawyers.
Where's the fun in that?
So, anything, any other kind of, are there any type of case that's especially, what about conditional, conditional zoning? Is there any type of case that you've heard that's, that's, that you'd like to be better schooled in?
No, but we did go through a situation that I think it would be helpful for, and you weren't here, that where we were approached by an applicant... you weren't here, that where we were approached by an applicant after the fact. And the, I'd like to, really didn't know too much of the protocol, you and I had a conversation about it, but what's the protocol if somebody approaches us in the parking lot?
Great question, is there before and after?
Mm-hmm.
And that'll be simple for us to address, and...
Also, also helpful to help us understand, when is the right time to recuse?
Okay. Yeah, good, recuse, and that's actually changed a little bit as far as what the law requires, so it's familial relationship, not just financial now, so...
And actually, I did, I did that.
What's that?
Not so long ago, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I recused not so long ago myself, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I mean...
That was family.
That's a really good, that's a really good question, because it's always that question, and I know you don't want to recuse if you don't have to, but you want to do the right thing, so we'll address that. Is there anything else in particular that we... Want to go over, okay, so there's a chance, there's always, you know, if you think of, come up with ideas, let me or Emily know. And think back to cases that you've heard, and things that were especially problematic for you, because we can offer review tools that can help unwrap some of the difficulty in more complicated cases. That's kind of how we're gonna approach the whole thing.
I know we're following statute as far as notification, but I think it's, and tonight is a good case in point, where you have folks who are presenting, who are obviously business-minded, erudite, you know, on top of things, and then you've got people who live here that might not understand what's happening to them. And part of the balancing act is what's good for the community and what's good for them. I don't know what we can do to, you know, as a board, what we can do to help with that situation so that they don't come in here so uninformed.
Okay.
So scared. And I've seen this in more than one case, where the homeowners and local property owners were...
Sort of blown away.
Blown away, absolutely.
There's options.
And both times, it was Duke Energy was involved.
Okay, there's an ordinance amendment, can we do that? Whenever Duke Energy's involved.
And they just, they weren't informed, you know, when the big bad company comes in, it's scary.
So there are, there are options, I think what the appropriate thing to do would be to discuss this, let me kind of give you some protocols that have, that are out there that folks do for different thresholds of notice. And then you could perhaps suggest something to the Board of Commissioners that would take the form of ordinance, but we'll, let's talk about it, and talk about the options and how to...
Because we're, you know, we're here in the citizens, you know, we're the front line here, we're here in the citizens and hearing their concerns, but we also want to, want our community to progress as much as possible. But I have seen this more than one time.
And I think, and we'll talk about that, like those circumstances, the chances are pretty good that we can, that those circumstances can be made at certain thresholds or certain impacts.
Right.
Where there's more notice, I don't, I don't know, just...
Well, when Duke comes in here, they're impressive, I mean, they've got their charts and easels and all kinds of stuff, and, but the community goes, oh my God, what's happening across the street?
Okay.
There, but there isn't a causal connection between Duke Energy and fear. Let's get that straight.
Yes, I know, I was kidding.
Well, but I don't know if you were here for the one where we approved...
Sue...
Corner of Shelton Road, they, the lady didn't realize that her house was so far down the hill, she was never gonna see the substation. She just didn't know.
And Stacy, Cory, and Dylan, I'll have to follow up with you, we actually have planning board members who are paid a stipend for attending meetings, and our budget covers, and I'd like you to, whether you sit or not, to attend meetings throughout the rest of this fiscal year, so April, May, June, and watch and learn when we do training to come even more forward and participate. But the future protocol is that you're paid when you sit, when you're needed to sit on the board, but I'd really, and you're always welcomed to come and watch and learn the process, but I'd really like you to, to come and watch and be on the payroll at least through the next few months, if that's okay with you. Okay, it's Cory's, Cory's face.
Time for dinner.
And if there's no objection from you, Paul, or for the rest of...
Absolutely not, I encourage it, I think it's great, good way to learn. Learn from our mistakes, so you won't make them. If there's no other new business, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Meeting is closed.